Eleven to seven thirty. Five twenty four, three, help the special meeting. Diane Meyer Ross. Nice that you need to try to leave life. We need to accomplish with the thousands by Zoom. Thank you for bringing the deep concern city YouTube tip. The thing is, thanks. Um, this is the theme of the role. Councilmember Benton.
Bill.
Councilmember Watten.
Here.
Councilmember Holiday.
Oh, she's cool.
Oh, Senator here.
Councilmember Cotton, here. Councilmember Pittsman, here. Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Yeah. And here, and I've confirmed that Mayor Pittsman Holloway is also on his way. He will be here shortly. Um, but we'll keep him in the agenda approval. And our first item of expectations, which is to prove the agenda. But hopefully, like Russian to prove his special media enough.
So.
Right. So we can find out the thousand, so we're watching and hearing this session. As you can see, Mary, let's add an executive session at the faculty agenda. You guys looking?
Yeah.
We invite Doctor Christensen, who has been asked to be there. An executive session, not the agenda, didn't any other? Any other changes?
Yeah. What would be the exact concession or potential negotiation?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other? Comments? Break up. Um, here's the guy.
Hi.
Uh, same for dates.
The board.
The unanimous, and the special media agenda is approved in addition of the executive section. So. So it's the pitch, I forget the, we keep that three zero, about one one zero one five, intentionation. For the. You know, we're charged to tell me your code of action or first, I just last in the five. I'm going to hang back the session, we'll have to, around, attorney, given the hand, then we can recover. Chief Lynch and Director Stephen Kaye. And there's a conference room right on call that we'll go to. This is on bond and we'll be back with about six fifteen P M. Return to the. Now, six three three, we have returned from the biggest segment. And these items on our agenda is eighty five point dash zero nine two Pacific West Rail Foundation Museum of the Movement. How would you? Chairman of the Holloway. Would you please read the summary and motion?
Okay. The intended agenda bill is to allow the construction and operation of the Pacific Northwest Rail Foundation Museum on property that will that is currently in separate ownership in downtown Suquonmi. The attached exhibits include the development agreement, conveyance agreement, and public use conveyance describe the assembly of the property and the requirements of the property to move forward. You're down, move to. Move for the approval of development agreement and public use covenant for the Pacific West Rail Foundation Museum.
Okay.
I'm very good for my thing. For the the foundation is done, if there's any comments, if there's any comments, we have already. And then if we want to do our attention here, it's very firm. That's the only. So now you can set up, if you have a guarantee, the train right hand, you'll see how the fight is over the years. It can be elevated, leaving the argument. We do have a kid that is represented by. That's on.
So, uh, council, um, has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I can also walk you through the tweaks that we made to the documents since the last meeting. So however you'd like to proceed. Your call.
Which?
Okay. Tweaks it is, um, for, uh, for the development agreement, um, on page three. There was previously a reference to a resolution number. We had replaced that with a reference to the agenda bills. Since there is not a resolution, they may just proceeding. Um, and on in section or sorry, article eight, which is on page, starts on page twenty seven. There was previously a blank. Um, and at the section that refers to the cities, what to purchase the handling parcels in the event that this project sort of falls apart before construction begins. And for something, some reason, something goes wrong, it's determined that the museum is not going to happen. Um, the city obviously gets to take its property back from the foundation. Um, this provision also allows the city to state its interest and acquiring the evaluation mechanism that goes along with that. And so this blank, um, had been, uh, had been a blank in terms of the number of days um, that, uh, the foundation has to inform the city of their market value termination. We filled that in with sixty days. I'm going to make that change. Um, and then I think that was everything on the development agreement. On the conveyance agreement. We changed section fourteen B. This was, uh, an error that council member Christiansen noticed where it had previously referred to the city's shareholders and directors and officers. We changed that to reflect that we're a city rather than a corporation or a, for profit corporation. But we don't have, uh, partners and shareholders. We have elected officials, um, and so forth. That's been revised. Um, and there were a couple of places where, uh, the foundation filled in contact information. Um, there was a reference to an escrow company that's playing. Just fill that in with an escrow agent, um, to be selected. We didn't name one because we don't know who we're going to use yet. Um, and, uh, let me see what else is, that was all for that. And the public use covenant, there was a blank in terms of the, uh, contact information for the foundation for official notices under the public use covenant that not filled in. There would be typo, where there was an of, incident of an or, I hadn't changed that I went to the or, which was supposed to be. That was in section seven point three. I believe that is everything.
Is that the question?
Um, what's the, I mean, Mr. Nelson might need to address this for. Um, does anybody know approximately, and I know there can be a burial to this. What the lengths of time going to fundraising, um, might be? Um, in other words, would it go past the coming by anyone?
I have heard, uh, three years is the funding time is what I had heard originally. Um, I can't verify that right now. I'm not here, but, um, within, within a year, Peter believes he will understand if he can raise the money or not for this. So within the year, we expect to have a good idea, but I believe three years is the amount.
Not one of those.
Yeah.
Actually, literally just thought of this, uh, on the way here, uh, tonight was, um, uh, and so you have to actually look there, but, uh, is there anything, uh, that would require them to hide, say, the pertinences? Uh, I mean, the structure looks absolutely beautiful the way it looks, um, but I mean, that doesn't mean that we'll be like naturally seen it. So is there anything in the, um, development agreement in the code or whatever that would cover that?
That would all be covered in, in Emily's planning commission process. Mission, side review with, with. Fix all that. And I do believe the code says that they have to be screened.
I thought so.
Um.
First, my memory.
Mr. Pittsman Holloway.
My first memory, how long, uh, what's the period that we have to have performance? Otherwise, since five years? Yeah.
On three years of the nursing extensions, option extensions.
Very exciting project. I think it definitely just follows our, um, current goals and development goals, so. So we was ready to vote then. Okay, all of them favor C I?
Aye.
Aye.
Me, Jose. Oh, it's unanimous and the Pacific West Rail Foundation Museum Development Room and it is coming into. Yay. He signed it in public hearing for eighty twenty twenty one number one. Twenty five, twenty six, but we haven't had anyone sign up to be. Nobody has.
They, I can see.
And no.
But I, oh.
The heart, heart of chambers that wish to speak in public. And then so our, um, both in public comment, now we are moving in. To, um, to session regarding the biennial budget, which is again twenty five, twenty six, ten hundred. With the first meeting in accordance, maybe the government, you can change the introduction.
What?
Thank you for zooming. Your purpose of the bill is to adopt the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six biennial budget.
Close action.
December. Move to approve ordinance, uh, twelve ninety six, adopting the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six biennial budget.
Yes, it's just the first reading. Okay, so. Do we have any, any questions? Do we have our budget creators, our budget vendors, then others? Do you have something that you have to do?
You know, with a weird thing of questions and answers, do we still have that?
Yeah, it's been provided as part of your budget document now. So, uh, in the package we received. There's a question and answer log with all who have participated in these meetings.
Good evening, council. You have received a packet. There are updates, not only including the question log and the answers, but also, um, some updated numbers which I'm going to go over if we didn't have any questions before I start. The first sheet to look at is that folded page on the top, and that's the statement of changes between our September sixteenth version and our September thirtieth version. And I'm just going to run through some of the two small changes, and then there's one larger change. Um, and then we'll move on to budgetary changes that are requested. Then we'll discuss the budget ordinance and how it differs from our previous budget ordinance and then finally I'll turn the time over to you for your deliberations. So the first change you'll see right there at the top of the sheet is the community development department has reorganized their full-time equivalent positions. Lightly, they have reclassified the associate planner position into an administrative specialist, and that represents a decrease of fifty five thousand dollars over the biennium. Our second change is within the stormwater C I P, which is fund number four hundred and seventeen. We have a grant that we want to include within the budget, and that's the Community Forestry Assistance Grant. Uh, that is, we've started, uh, expending funds this year for that, about twenty five thousand is expected to be spent. And that's, I believe it's on trees, forestry expenditures. And then the remaining fifty thousand will probably be spent at the beginning of twenty twenty five, so we'd like to appropriation for both, um, for that expenditure and then an associated grant. The next one is the large change. You've heard us say many times that these numbers in, um, utilities are preliminary, and over the past week, I've done a full-scale reconciliation to the numbers that we have in the utility rate study. And the biggest change is that there were five new program, uh, five new projects that were not included in the numbers you've received before. The biggest is the Class A reservoir and pump station that accounts for seven point seven million dollars. There's the S R two bridge utility main, which is in a million dollar increase. Canyon Springs Improvement Project, which is point two million. We have the seven oh five zone booster pump project, which is forty five thousand. The Kimball Creek Pump Station Project, which is one million. And then we also have some additional, uh, debt that is currently posed, proposed within the utility rate study. Of course, this debt depends on the relationship we want between our increases in, uh, utility rates and then whatever debt we may want to uh, encumber within the city so that we were just achieving the right level of rates. And then finally, there are some adjustments downward for labor allocations. The end result is about ten point two million dollars increase within four hundred and seventeen, fund four hundred and seventeen, or the utilities capital fund. And then you will also see some increases transfers into the utility, uh, capital fund. Those are matched by an increase. Um, there's revenue increase for the capital fund, and then there's the expenditure increase where we see that transfer. So it really looks like we've, uh, doubled, double those increase in projects, but it's, it's a transfer from one place to another. So moving money around to accomplish these projects. And then there's also increased utility rates of four point two million over the biennium to achieve an ending fund balance in accordance with our financial management policy. Now, I do want to caution you that all of these changes are preliminary in nature. I did my own mini utility rate study, and it's not worth very much compared to what F C S is doing right now. So you will get those details, you will get, um, you'll have the decisions in your hands to figure out the right balance of debt and utility rates and, um, you'll be looking at operating costs and capital project costs, the programs, the existing debt, any new debt, and of course, our ending fund balance requirement. So that, that conversation is coming, but we've updated to our closest, um, estimate of where our capital fund will be. Any questions before I move on from that?
Mayor Pittsman Holloway.
One point one million dollars of additional debt. What, what's the instrument of that? How's that coming?
What instrument, what kind of bond are we using?
Going for, well, are we going for, what are, how are we getting that debt? How are we getting that money?
Well, there is a loan from Department of Ecology. And so that's a large portion of that, and then there are also bonds. So that's currently what's being considered. Um, but of course, it's, we're considering it. It doesn't really matter what we consider. It matters what you consider when it's presented to you at a date to come in October, I believe. And that, just a reminder that ecology, it has a really great rate, which I'm not recalling at the moment, but it's much better than the current market race to bond. That is, that, um, concludes our additions. And the only one of those changes that affects the general fund is that community development full-time equivalent change. You can see a slight improvement. Um, I believe that very, if you look at twenty thirty four, it's now at twenty six point seven million. It used to be twenty eight point eight million. So we've decreased, uh, the line just a little bit. Has a very slight effect, but it is there and doesn't, within this ten-year forecast. We also have budgetary changes requested. Our current, um, request is that hundred and seventy two, uh, a hundred and seventy two thousand, you've heard mentioned several times. This is to, um, uncover some of our ponds that have been overgrown in accordance with the N P D E S permit requirements for storm ponds. Um, and we're hoping that council can come to an agreement as to whether we should include this or not, so that we can move forward and adjust our budgetary numbers. This will increase our C I P. Um, it will likely have an effect on the rates for stormwater and then also transfers.
That's fun.
With this, um, stormwater request, um, I know, as, as I'm recalling it, that, um, it was brought up that this would be done by commercial, uh, commercial landscapers. It was something that are our own, um, stormwater folks can't do or something there with the weed whacker and take it down. And the second part of the question is, would we be able to maintain that if we have to be professionally?
Deputy Director Phil Bennett.
Thank you. Um, if we went out there with weed whackers, we would be around the clock, three hundred and sixty five days a year, twenty four hours a day, and we probably wouldn't be able to keep up. Just realistically, we're talking acres of these slopes, or what you see in the picture there. You know, uh, the pond as it was when it was built and how it is now. It, 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 with current staffing levels, it is impossible for us to get there. And now we've made a lot of progress with the Department of Corrections, but even with that tool, we are not able to keep up. We're not able to catch up to where we should be, and we're also not able to keep up. Um, and that's based off of operations this year, but we know that.
So Department of Corrections wouldn't be able to do the long-term maintenance on that.
So what we've, what we figured out is that Department of Corrections can maintain about half of these ponds at the the, the level that they should be maintained at. So we can accomplish that with the Department of Corrections crews. But the other fifty percent of those ponds, we would not be able to do so, uh, with the current Department of Corrections contract.
Something? And the request for this one is in order to meet the N P E, the N P D E S permit requirement.
Correct.
So what will happen then if we don't go forward with these amendments? Required by that.
Excuse me. Um, so what will happen is we, we don't want to be a foul of the permit terms. And so the, what the permit calls for, the standards to which the ponds are designed for is on the left, you're seeing the treeless slopes, um, the functional or practical reasons for that is we don't want roots going into the pond liner and disrupting that and causing leakage. That's one issue. Um, the other thing is we need to be able to access the, uh, the mechanical structures, the maintenance strains and so on, um, that are currently buried. If we can't access those, we can't maintain the ponds. We can't drain them. We can't dig them out. It just adds to knock on effects, and that's why ecology has those standards so that the ponds actually can be maintained effectively. Um, so yeah, we could be looking at violating the permit if we don't perform the work. Um, yeah.
We can follow. Yeah, if, if that were to happen, I see there's, there's the attorney is gone. What would the consequences be then? Would they gain permits? Well, I assume this would be a very large expensive problem.
My experience with state agencies is they find heavily and find often.
Pastor Vincent.
Um, thank you. Uh, and this hundred seventy two thousand dollars is meant to service how many ponds again?
Twenty three.
Twenty three ponds. So we're talking about, we're talking about eight thousand dollars a pond, slightly less than that, which seems like a screaming deal for, uh, the amount of work that needs to be, I mean, how many of them look like that one? Did you give us the worst one? You gave us the worst one.
So. They're, they're all worse, but we can't effectively photograph just how bad it is. It's like you, when you're in the jungle, you can't see the jungle, you know?
Right. Okay. So yeah, that just seems like a screaming deal to me. I don't, I don't know why we wouldn't. I mean, this, uh, especially when you consider the possibility of fines. So that's a great deal.
That's why. And then.
Nothing. He was just gonna agree with me.
Any other questions?
Yeah, it's a point of, um, if this comes to this project funding and center comes to us, I'd like to learn more about, um, you know, why, why it's important. Uh, but I do understand that if, like, we have to do it for a permit, that cool, I guess it sounds like we have to do it, but yeah, I just love to be educated. Like the science and stuff.
I mean, your personal public works.
Yeah.
Thank you. Holloway.
I guess I want to. Let it struggle, because I, I, maybe it tells me the job. Um, in my pea brain, longer grass retains water better than shorter. I'm a little confused of.
Yep.
So, uh, why these standards are requiring me to do maintain lawn around the ponds when longer grass would be better to test the water, just their function. I understand getting to the mechanicals and all that, got that. Uh, I guess my question is to have that conversation in public works, but also, but again, um, is there a way, in some ways, to change the standard? So that I can maintain to get the mechanicals, but other areas I can let grow because it actually functions better for the purpose of water retention and water cleaning as natural versus manicure.
We have had, yeah, extensive discussions.
Educate us on those discussions.
You guys. Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. Yep, we can do that.
Next up is the budget ordinance itself. This is different than our standard budget ordinance, and I'm just going to dive into why. First of all, it does adopt the city's twenty twenty five, twenty six proposed budgetary appropriation as per usual. The first big change in section three. This, um, budget ordinance allows transfers between individual appropriations within any one fund by order of the mayor. And the language in past ordinances said, or by any one fund or functional classification. So we were limited, uh, police budget would stay just strictly to itself. Administration within the general fund would also stay strictly with, to itself. And we would, we report on that to you. The reason for this change is because we are assuming a five percent vacancy rate, and in order, in order to combine all of the general fund, um, employees, we are able to look at them in one group within the budget ordinance, which allows for a little bit of flexibility. If one group is experiencing more, um, uh, empty positions than another, then we can balance that out across the fund. So really, this, this section applies to the general fund. That is where we would experience the change. Any questions for that before I move on?
Councilor Cotton.
So what about if there's funds that come in for specific purposes? And I am thinking about for the fire department. Um, funds that are allocated to, um, like the, the V L S allocation or, or M I H, the mobile and branded health. Um, are those being kept accountable for, um, just the fire department use? Or do those, if they're not used by the fire department, then, and?
The fire department uses all of those funds and then that much more. So if there, if there were an issue where we would be very close, we would have to monitor that just to stay on the right side of using the right revenues for the right expenditures, but we've never been in a situation where we receive too many fire revenues, uh, as compared to our fire expenditures or similarly with the police fund. Drew, did you have someone get up?
No, I was gonna say exactly the same thing that she did is, you know, we certainly do receive fire-related revenues, but it requires certainly a lot more property tax and sales tax revenue that's unrestricted in order to uh, fund the remaining portion of the fire department itself. So we've never had an, or would ever potentially have an experience, right, for the most part, which are fire revenues that we generate would be more than the fires that's going out. So.
Right, but in in this case where, um, uh, allowing transfers out of those funds is what probably more what I was thinking about it related to this topic, like transferring some of those, let's say, the M I H funds to another general fund, um, issue or, or something like that. So.
I think we would say that the gap between, uh, those revenues and the expenditures is so large that those funds just wouldn't be transferred, transferred to another department. We would have to experience such a massive decrease in fire expenditures that if, I don't think, Drew, I would ever consider that as, as being likely.
So I guess I'm slightly confused at this because the council approves the appropriations. Our black lines. What you're proposing now is council approves appropriations except for uh, things related to head cow, or what's that except for? And help me, why? What would be the difficulty if we just said, we leave it the way it is? Council approves appropriations and he's shifting between the appropriations and the fact.
This really would simplify it for us and make the general fund just like any other fund. With other funds, we aren't limited by functional classification. We say if there's, there's a low part here, there's a high part here, they even out, and we're okay according to the budget ordinance. And this gives us that same flexibility within the general fund.
It allows all to also just possibly work for a general fund, is that five percent? Otherwise, if you do the individual, you have to do the type of, and then please, you know, where the in a fire.
So just for clarification, what we're talking about is all personnel costs across the city. We is being lumped together so that we can we can use that strategically without exceeding the ninety-five percent that we're designating through this budget process.
I would say all within the general fund because that's the only place we're applying the five percent, but yes.
Okay, so it wouldn't include like utilities.
Correct.
That's separated out, but but from general administration to to police services to to wherever within that, then that's the bandwidth of up to ninety-five percent. Thank you. Yeah, I I think I I think I might, the question in my mind was similar to, I think, uh, what Mayor Protem was saying. It it seems like to me that would add a step to bring it back to council. But it I but it wouldn't make it make it uh. It it doesn't seem like it would necessarily have to be more cumbersome. It's it's an added step. Wh- what 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 is, uh? I guess what I'm wondering is what is the drawback to bringing it back to council? I think that uh the drawback from the perspective of council could be loss of oversight about transfer of funds from from one from one uh division to another. Um, and uh, and I don't, I I think that I I don't think that we would want to give up that oversight. Um, and I'm not, I guess I'm not understanding why giving up that oversight would be too big a a problem to overcome.
So currently how it is in the general fund is we've got separate functional classifications. So, for example, the police department has a budget, let's say five million dollars. That police department cannot exceed five million dollars without a budget amendment coming forward. We've proposed a five percent vacancy rate across the board within the general fund itself. So that means we're lowering the police salaries and benefits by five percent. It potentially could happen in which the police department actually has a vacancy rate that's less than five percent or that we're using that money to reappropriate, for example, overtime. At that point, we would have to come back to the council, right? To come and request an additional appropriation because of that. Most cities don't incorporate functional classifications as a part of their budget order. So it's an actual extra step Sinis Tapi has implemented for the most part in order to not rein in, let's say, control the budget for each of the separate departments of the general fund itself. Um, certainly you can have that oversight, uh, it's welcome, but how that helps us out, for example, is uh the C D department. Uh, for the most part, it would be great if there's savings in the C D department or the finance department and we're using money to support overtime expenses in both the police and the fire department to be able to reapply those dollars to the police and fire without coming back with a budget amendment or things like that. So we're treating the general fund as one business in total, not as seven separate businesses, but basically we're all pulling from the same funds within the general fund itself. And so consequently, we feel that that's the appropriate level. It also comes with the economies of scale, so you'll you won't see the volatility necessarily if you start from a higher employee base, F T E base, than you would if you have C C D department of six in which five percent. You know, they can only be a hundred percent or eighty percent or things like that, right? They can't really be have a five percent vacancy rate, zero or twenty percent or whatever for the most part. So it helps to just even things out to ideally achieve that five percent vacancy rate over the course of a two-year period.
I've already answered this, uh, but was there a any uh cap on how much the uh transfer could be that's done by the mayor or would that be capped at five percent?
Well, it's it's within the general fund, so right now she can move money around with her line items within the general fund. Right now, the current budget order is she can move money around within the police department, she can move money around within the fire department, but she can't move between fire department and the police department and vice versa. We're just expanding that a little bit to say if there's savings, for example, in finance, because we haven't hired or we're over the five percent vacancy rate, then the mayor can go forward and move that money from the finance department to the police department or the fire department to cover any sort of expenses there. It just helps with the flexibility with the administration for us to be able to do that.
So I guess the other point, um, when I look at the general fund and I compare it to any of the other funds, uh, the only thing that is really close uh in terms of uses is um the non-unilities capital fund. Uh, oh, uh, yeah, the non-unilities capital fund and uh also the utilities capital fund, but nothing else really comes close. Um, but if you look at the individual uh functional classifications, forgot that word, right? Uh, those look more similar to the size of the other funds. Um, so it seems like potentially we're talking about the mayor having the ability to move massive amounts of money around between these different um uh functional classifications. Is that right?
Yes.
Yes, okay, um, so I guess that to me it seems like, okay, I I get the idea here. I wonder if there was some kind of like a cap that I know that the point here is being followed, that say five percent or something like that. Um, then uh, yeah, I might be able to get there a little bit more easily, but just the wide open. Um, that's a lot of money to be free to move around very fluidly between some very important uh functional classifications.
Would um there be or would it be a little um appropriate then if transfers were made? That at least the city council is notified? Like if a certain amount of money was moved, that we'd be notified of that?
Yeah, I think that would be very valuable for us to, and I think we would. And that has since come back to you and say, indeed, you will be getting monthly, well, not monthly, but quarterly reports, financial reports overall that would describe how we are against the different budgets. So as you can see, as a part of the budget orders, we've we have still broken out the functional classifications that just wouldn't necessarily be legally binding to us. So we come back with a quarterly report, we're still gonna report out on those functional classifications if we're over or under budget for each and every separate one that you see here. If we are over in certain functional classifications, uh, then we would transfer money and probably share with you what that transfer looks like from the other functional classifications within in the general fund itself. In order to increase the appropriation for one and then decrease the appropriation for another. We have to remain within the total appropriation for the general fund for the two-year period, so forty-three point eight seven million dollars.
So the three firefighters that we're wanting to hire based on the five percent vacancy rate. If it's functional, can you apply all the general fund five percent to the to like to the fire department? And a lot of them never have.
So we've increased the expenditures in the fire department by those three firefighters. Already, so their appropriation has already increased to match that for the most part, and then we've reduced the personnel cost for all the other functional classifications by that five percent at this point. Which is what is legally binding on the administration at this? Is it gonna be eleven million dollars for city administrative uh department? We're gonna be legally binding to that number or is it gonna be like total forty-three point eight seven, so?
Yeah, so would these transfers, would they only apply to labor costs? Uh, because when when we when we talked about this this plan, it was so that we could so that we could fund the employees that we needed or or if we saw a need for employees like the three firefighters that we need to get in here, that 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 mechanism would be used to to do that. Is that is that is the plan that these would specifically be for employee costs?
Yeah, that would be the plan. It's just a research.
Be like, you know, if now the the fire department decided they really want this truck, we're gonna buy this truck.
No.
It 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 would be, it would specifically refer to labor costs.
Yeah, I think that's potentially one addition that we can make to this is just to focus on those labor costs and provide some more clarity or section that you've got.
I'm con- I'm confused now what baseline I'm going against. Am I to make motions against what was handed to me tonight or what was prior handed? Is this advising me these changes have already been made or asking for the changes to be made?
So the packet that you have in front of you is an updated.
Yeah, two.
The one you gave us tonight.
The one that we gave you tonight. Ideally, if we had more time, we would have taken your books away from you and updated. Right, second time.
Well, that's my drift though. You've done the appropriate thing here, okay? But at some point I want a baseline and I want changes from that baseline to be blatant, evident and discussed. Okay, and you've done the appropriate thing of bringing them here. I just wanna reinforce the point. I'm looking for what's my baseline I'm working off of. And I it needs to, I you can't hand it to me just before the meeting and that and have me corporately react to it, okay? So having said that, guys, we we took the five percent, we gave the appropriations and the expectations in each department, then but manages within their appropriations, given that five percent reduction. So I think first it's you look internal to the appropriation, see if there's changes. If not, and appropriate, you bring back an appropriation change to address that mechanism in place. I disagree with violating the sanctity of the appropriation for convene. Okay, so I I motion to remove the change in section three.
Second, third.
I mean, I'd rather make a revision to it for the most part. Uh, we can go back to the old our current budget ordinance because we can take the language directly from there and insert it into this section. So which included the functional classification. So the only thing that's missing here was a subtraction from the current ordinance itself, and we can potentially bring that back on Thursday.
Um, I can understand the need and the want for transparency, especially around this idea that we're getting away from budgeting for a hundred percent, knowing we'll never get to a hundred percent on staffing. Uh, my question to the finance department, would it be reasonable on a monthly basis that we can see exactly where we're falling as far as that ninety-five percent? Are we, because I suspect it's going to be more like ninety percent or eighty-nine percent, not ninety, not at the cap of ninety-five percent, because there's going to be vacancies, there's going to be new positions coming online that are not immediately filled and just having that transparency, I think would give some comfort to, you know, those of us and in that way, we're not getting into the weeds because we're just simply setting policy and and a balanced budget. And that anybody that is interested to know where we're we're lining up. And I think that's probably one of the challenges is because we didn't have Tyler and and the 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 whole uh new system that'll allow us greater transparency, I I guess I'm asking for some guidance or help from the finance department. How can we make that a reality? And that may give some more comfort to the seven of us um in making sure that, you know, we're setting policy, we're not, we're not dictating um or micromanaging what's happening. And I think that might be some of the the angst I'm hearing from my colleagues. So that's not where my angst is coming from. Um, my my angst is coming from the idea of of I government and separation of powers and it is the responsibility of the mayor to guard the mayor's power. It is the responsibility of the council to guard the council's power and to maintain it because they're they're meant to be balanced. If ever we do anything that changes that balance, then uh I think we we run into to dangerous uh ground.
Yeah, I I agree with uh Councilmember Vincent's words here, and I guess the other point I'd add is well, let's say that a transfer happens that we don't necessarily, the majority of us agree with, it can't be undone. There there it is, so it's not really transparent. It's transparent in the fact that we were told about it, but after the fact. We have a statutory responsibility with budget.
To the extent, I would also suggest that potentially the mayor has a responsibility, right, to the citizens of the city as well, including the administration too. So I'll make sure that that's probably very clear uh to everyone here as well that you really, we're here to provide the levels of service that are expected and to implement the policy that council sets. So if this is a policy that council is gonna set, then that's perfectly okay. Um, we're interested, obviously, from our perspective in terms of making sure that we're the most efficient that we possibly can so we can deliver the results that both council and the community expects of of us overall. So making sure that we have a system that works for everyone is critical, and if this is something that we have to withdraw, I'm perfectly happy doing that and bringing back an ordinance that does that.
Uh, no, I I just I I don't feel comfortable going forward and with the language there, but I'd like to go back to where it was. If we're gonna talk about other options to do that, but it gives me a little bit of anxiety. I don't recall this being brought up earlier in the legislature conversations, if it was, and I don't understand.
Yeah, and and the only other point that I would make is that I I totally agree, this is less efficient. Um, but that's, in my opinion, one of the ways that our government was was structured and that a certain level of inefficiency has its value.
Okay.
So we have a motion up there to remove this. She um, if I may, to three, that allows between individual appropriations instead of functional classification. So it's just simple to change the wording on that, pretty good to focus on labor. That's what that's what we're doing, it's functional.
So I'm gonna go try to look for the language.
Well, this is highly inefficient.
So can I propose language? Okay, um, so uh, motion to modify section three transfers within funds authorized to state pursuant to R C W thirty-five A dot thirty-four dot two zero zero parentheses two. In parentheses, transfers between individual appropriations within any one fund of the twenty-five through twenty-twenty-six binding budget may be made during the twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-six fiscal binding and by order of the mayor provided. However, the transfers between individual appropriations within the journal fund, fund number zero zero one, may be made only within the functional classifications within the general fund identified in the summary in section two above. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I I don't think it's section two above.
So section two is the table that you have in your budget for this.
One that.
Basically, that's probably not the one right there.
Um, one in our.
Yes, the one in your dependencies in the binder. Yes.
Which which one, which?
A two, is that all we're talking about?
Uh, yes, it should be A two.
Point of order. May, we have the modified motion displayed, so that we can read that? Or am I missing the point?
Wherever that damn thing is, revert it back to what was in the document before tonight. If you want to propose another change, there's another meeting coming up, okay? But I believe the motion was just to revert what we had before, okay? And I do not want discussions of uh, division of power or motions with staff. I think that's inappropriate. Okay, so the motion could be to revert back to what it was. We want to do, you want to take time to do the homework, and get this better worded, we can do that in our next meeting. Right? I, we're, we're, we're microengineering the motion. I don't think we need to tonight.
Okay, I, I think that the motion on the table, and maybe I misremember, but was something like to remove section three? Right, which I think that if we did, then like, what are we doing at all with the budget? I think we actually have to have section three, it's just that uh, I think the intent of the motion was to not uh, do the thing that was being proposed. And I think that um, uh, director of ours, uh, suggestion was uh, something that would be very similar to what we had originally, uh, yeah. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, I took it directly from the current biennial budget ordinance.
Excellent, yeah.
I read it exactly word for word, yeah.
So the idea of actually striking section three is something that we probably shouldn't do, it's more that it I think your intent of the motion was to.
Was the original wording.
Yeah, not do the wording that was up there.
So, and that's what you ran as original.
I did.
Sorry, I'm, I'm having a, where is the original wording for section three?
So it's not gonna be in that binder.
Okay.
It's gonna be, it's your twenty-three, twenty-four amended biennial budget ordinance, which is nothing related to this, so.
So it's just returning to what it was before. Any other comments?
Sometimes it's the best function.
The wording should be original wording.
Well, can we bring that slide back up?
Which slide?
The slide of changes.
There are, there are two others.
Yeah, I, I needed.
More changes. Sections four and five um address continuing appropriations, and what that means is that generally we appropriate for a budgetary period of two years. But for projects, um, we can budget a continuing appropriation, which means at the beginning of, say, a four-year project, we might appropriate for the total value of that project. And that way, at the end of the biennium, we're not making guesses about how much we should appropriate the next year, that may be too high or too low. Um, something that will need to be adjusted. Instead, we look at the, the project and its total life of project. So that means that a project's appropriation may extend from biennium to biennium if the project is not completed or abandoned.
Yeah, I think that we talked about this one before for a while when we talked about CIP, and I think this is a fantastic idea. Uh, it was, I'm not on Parks and Public Works right now, but when it was for the previous two years, it was frustrating looking at those vibes and going, okay, so we've got two sets of numbers. One is for the biennium, one is toward the extension of the project, and trying to understand that. Um, and I could just imagine that for many citizens who don't follow every single meeting, if they're looking at one of these things, it can be very confusing, uh, and it's, it's what we would do anyway. Uh, we're not likely to get to a biennium and be like, oh, uh, well, actually, um, because we're at the end of the biennium, I guess we're done paying for the project. Uh, that just doesn't sound realistic. What we could do is, we see that the cost is falling, and we talk about the idea that we would get on a project that's going on for two or four years, and you get these periodic death dates saying we're, we're way behind, this is, this is gonna cost many millions more than we expected, and then we as a council go, okay, we, we got a full plug on this. Or in an ideal situation, maybe it's even under budget, yay for that. Uh, yes, I think that that uh, is a fantastic change to the prior order of business, and I think it's just, it's more honest for the public of what the intent is of the council.
Help me out a bit, because I can see a four-year project. And we approve it, and I, I agree with that so far. But all of a sudden, we decide, ah, I can do it in two years. So I'm gonna shift that four-year project to be all within one biennium. That may not work with the budget in place. Yeah, and I'm going to the fringe thing, I admit. Into the extreme, um, but still how, how does this work? For right now, we at least take a stab at half of this biennial, half of this biennial, and then if we decide to do that, we come back and we change the uh, budget to match and say, we're getting a better cost by doing it in two years for four years. Um, or we're combining projects as we did in uh, waste. We combined projects and it came out to our benefit. How does that play with, I, I'm I get lost between section four and five and six, okay, because yes, I agree, we, we approve projects multi-year, but we budget biennial. How is what you're proposing to?
You're right, that there's a cash flow issue that has to be solved with every appropriation, with every expenditure we make. And I believe that the CIP would kind of spell out that cash flow situation over the six years. You know, even though we've appropriated for the entire budget, there will be an allotment for each year, because we, you're right, we can't complete certain projects within a year, we would just run out of money. Go negative, so that's certainly a consideration that we would have to make, and hopefully the CIP would spell that out. Um, so that we are staying within those bounds, and when we make changes, they would be brought to you. If there is a scenario where perhaps we can experience savings by doing something quicker or combining two elements of the project. Um, those would be contractual, and I believe that they would, in every case, be brought to you for a project. At least everything over fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that was, that was what I was saying is, under those circumstances, we get a budget amendment proposed to us. And it be explained right before they went ahead and, and did something drastic at that. If it didn't fall within the, if it was a four-year, if it was a four-year project, and uh, they were talking about doing year four stuff in year two, then that would require some, some sort of budget amendment, either because they saved so much money that they need to uh, reallocate a, a bunch of funds that aren't gonna be used.
Or project four.
Or because, uh, you know, they, they see, they see a savings, but it's gonna cost us in the short term more than we had anticipated. We get, we get some kind of budget amendment, right? But to, to Councilman Johnson's point, um, the sanity of it, uh, you kind of keep the, the whole budget in mind, which is something that we complain about a lot. When we, when we look at these projects and we, and we, and they say, oh, we've got enough money for this, and and we say, well, wait a second, let's look at the whole scope of this thing. Are we gonna have enough money for this? Yeah, sure, we have enough money now, are we gonna have enough money for steps five and six? Um, so, uh, it seems to me like your concern would be addressed through budget amendments that we would see in, in committees and any council. Otherwise, they couldn't legally spend the money that way.
So what I was gonna share is state law allows us to exceed our budget appropriation for that two-year period for a project anyway. Um, there's RCW thirty-five A thirty-four dot two seven zero. Already allows us to do that, uh, for the most part, especially if the project's in progress already. We're just trying to be more transparent with that, stick to the life of project budget, make sure that that is now legally binding, because right now life and project budget is not binding on this administration or us in general, right, overall. We're reporting that as a courtesy, right, to council, but there's no reason for us to, well, we want to because it's good financial practice, right, overall, to stay within that, but there's nothing legally complying us or requiring us to actually remain with that amount. In addition to this, we're often, as a part of the budget statement, describing the budget amendments that we intend to make in the future. This will require us to actually come forward with a budget amendment at the time if we're going to exceed the project budget, which you have seen council for the past year or so, especially with the change in inflation rates, you've seen a lot of that sort of movement written into the budget statement itself. The goal is to bring back those budget amendments at the time to increase the project budget if we need to, and then pull from other projects, maybe reducing their appropriation, so. The goal is to provide council with that clarity, that transparency, and making sure that those life and project budgets are actually binding on us legally overall, and so hopefully council can see this as kind of a win uh, for the most part, um, and then it will help us out too, because where we struggle is trying to estimate where we're gonna end up at the end of the two-year period. You know, so often we're making these estimates of how much we're gonna spend on a project, um, eight months ahead of, right, the end of the year, uh, in some cases, we're gonna be off because there's delays here or things like that for the most part, to the point where we have to come back in the new year to try to true up where we actually ended up at the end of the year, and that just takes more time itself, so. Uh, we're trying to be hopefully more transparent with this to show you what is the life of project budget, tell us the community what the life of project budget is overall. Um, and that's our goal.
And if I'm understanding correctly, uh, if a project works, you start opening in costs, uh, at some point, we would reach the maximum appropriation that was given for the project, so um, you know, whether it was in one year or four years, whenever it is, that we reach that point where, uh, the projects were money, it still has to come back to us.
Um, and another point of control you have is the warrant register, so you can just see it up there also. That, that all of a sudden, it's a whole bunch of expenditures.
So section five that you have as a part of your budget ordinance is really there to just kind of recite what the state law is for the most part. Um, that's all we're doing, is kind of reciting that our city, our CW thirty-five A dot thirty-four dot two seven zero. And then we're treating capital programs and debt surveys, uh, programs separately from capital projects, so those would not have uh, of life from program budget necessarily, because the street resurfacing programs are gonna go on forever. You know, so in a hundred years, we're gonna have we don't want to see that appropriation just crease, increase, you know, every two years, right, for the most part, to add on top of the next one and so on, so. Uh, we want to remain within that two-year appropriation for those capital programs, basically, which is what we're including here and why we've written that into section six itself, so. The goal for the street resurfacing program is to stay within the one point one, three million dollars appropriated for this two-year period. We don't use it by the end of that, uh, two-year period, it doesn't just in our impression, unless there's a construction or something in progress, it doesn't just roll into the next one itself. We'd reset for that next two-year period and so on, uh, for the most part, so. For the capital programs and debt service programs, those would remain, but it is more detailed than what you would do, which normally is just appropriate at the non-un utilities capital fund level. Right, for the most part, and then you'd be appropriating twenty million dollars there. This gives you more control at this level.
Are we then gonna look at the CIP and designate? Cause some of those are just planned. I don't know that we've actually identified which projects are adopted within the CIP. Or should it be planned out in the future? But I'm, I'm not sure what that term means in that context, and we handle the CIP slightly different than the budget. It's not as constrained and changed. It's a living document that we go through as, as these projects go on. In order to do that, what you're proposing though, doesn't the CIP now need to be locked with the budget and essence as you're making those changes? They also need to become more frequently backed and controlled uh, through this process, so I, I'm, I'm stuck in the mechanics, and maybe I'm just dense. Um. You can tell me that, uh, do it offline. So I'm, I'm, I would appreciate a conversation maybe back in public works. Uh, what are the, what are the mechanics implied by this moving forward? Okay, is the CIP now locked with the budget and it only changes by council, council change? And projects are constrained by the CIP, and we have to designate which ones are adopted and which ones are just planned? Uh. Give me, give me some help in that, but it's probably a discussion back in.
There were two questions that I want to address. The first one is, how are we adopting all the projects in the CIP? What we've done in this ordinance is no, we've only adopted the historic, or we've only included the historic projects that are continuing today, and then the new ones that start during the biennium. So that's how we've treated it, we haven't looked at anything that occurs after twenty-twenty-six, because of that portion. The second one, the CIP, um, how formal should it be? That's a very good question. I will tell you that as the budget, budget manager, I think about the cash flow scenarios all the time, and, and the implications of what that means. And, and what I'm responsible to report, I think it's a very good question that maybe should be hashed out in Parks and Public Works, because I don't have a very good answer for how fluid that would be. I think that technically this ordinance, and I hope, uh, Director Bute will correct me if I say this incorrectly, but hopefully maybe not hopefully, but the budget ordinance wouldn't necessarily bow before the CIP, we're appropriating a certain amount. And so I think that that is what stands legally, um, as the budget manager, though, I there will be a dance behind every single, uh, contract that comes forward, making sure that our cash flows are sufficient and appropriate for, for those things that can go forward.
So I, I think what's really important for everyone is to make sure that we're wrapping our heads around CIP, it's a six-year document, some of it's happening now, others are anticipated for future bienniums, but we won't know if we have the funds to do those, it's just a, a list of priorities, of things that we need to do so that we're, we're organized, that we're consistent, that we have a plan going forward to preserve the capital. We exist, that exists today, or maybe things that we find to be important, but by no means are we, are we locked in on the next six years. We're only locked in on this biennium, what we can accomplish, is that a fair overview?
Yeah, I think that's generally a fair overview, plus council has the ability to also attract, right, projects from the budget itself, so that to me, we're locking ourselves into those projects that are in the budget. Um, but primarily the CIP from my vantage point is the financial plan of whether we're gonna have the money when we need it to construct these projects, right, overall, and we have to deal with the scarcity of the revenues that we have, and it's a revenue constrained plan that forces us into certain choices about what projects. Now, certainly, the budget reflects that CIP. Uh, but ultimately, it's the budget that's gonna tell us exactly what we can or can't accomplish for the next two-year period.
And also correct me if I'm misunderstanding some of this, um, so I believe that, uh, with regard Um, so I believe that, uh, with regard to fund, is it three-ten, remembering correctly?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, you told me capital fund.
Yes, uh, that that amount is appropriated at the fund level, not at the level of the individual, uh, projects and programs in the C I P. Uh, so we aren't locked into any of them really, um, because we haven't actually signed the contracts unless we have for that. So I'm wondering for sections four and five, is when we say meaning of projects appropriation, what that means is we now have a contract, this contract is gonna last for three years. Let's take care of this contract at the project level rather than at the biennium.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. We're also making sure that we can track the encumbrances as well, so we've spent against the contract. But that contract's counted against the overall project, project budget. And so we're seeing a lot of that information come forward in the, in the agenda bills that council receives. I mean, this is almost the reverse of the first in my impression.
Okay, I think we've covered that section six, capital programs. I'm gonna go on to the next section unless there's any questions. Okay, the final change here. Sure. Want me? Okay, in section eight, um, this completes the intention that we brought forward when you passed the T B D sales tax, the zero point one percent T B D sales tax. We discussed transferring slightly less of those utility taxes that were going into non-utility capital and, um, leaving them in the general fund where they're receipted. So this decreases the percentage from thirty-three point three percent transferred down to fifteen percent of the total tax received. And just as a reminder, these aren't all utility taxes, these are just the city utilities and the solid waste utility taxes.
Um, I'm sorry, did, did we leave the section six things? I, I, I feel like I missed something.
Section six, Drew really addressed or Director Bute address, addressed?
I think that's one of the, I just wanna make sure because I, I.
Okay.
It flew past me somehow.
So we have the two sections, we have the projects, which had the life of, uh, project by, uh, budget. And then we have the programs and those are ongoing programs, things like resurfacing streets, replacing playgrounds, things like that, and we're not continuing those forever if they aren't spent. What we are saying is that if, if it's in progress and if there's a contract and or if there's a contract outstanding, we will complete that in the next biennium. We won't just, uh, uh, steal from the next year's program. That's essentially what section six is saying. Okay, back to this T B D sales tax, do we have any questions on that?
Hold on, hold on, where you go back? I'm sorry, I'm a slow reader.
Still adjusting.
So is, are we anticipating that the point one percent T B D sales tax is going to equal the equivalent of about eighteen point three percent of the taxes from a solid waste and utility tax? Is that, is that?
It was calculated based on, I believe that non-utility capital makes out a little bit better than the general fund, but that's just so that we have a normal percentage, um, instead of a seventeen point one three four percentage. So it essentially, yes.
Thank you.
And that concludes our changes to the ordinances that we propose. Um, and then finally, just a reminder that this Thursday is the second reading of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-three, six biennial budget ordinance public hearing as well. And, um, I believe now your, your turn to deliberate on someone's thinking. And let us know your direction. If you have any questions. Comments?
Let me start the conversation, uh. Where we left our intrepid adventure last season, uh, was a discussion about the administrative contract. Was there contact with the vendor and would they? They appear to be amenable, but do we confirm they are amenable to a change in the administrative fee outside of sequence of the contract? That, um, where is that? Right now, I believe we're at eight point, what is it?
Seven point seven.
Seven point seven percent.
Ten point seven.
Ten point seven. Yeah.
Three percent.
Well, it was ten point seven, um, cause I remember I did my math before. Uh, I'm, I motion to reduce the administrative fee on solid waste management contract to five point five percent. Second. Uh, it, that's on page twenty-one, or at least on the old copy. I had to go back to the. Five point five percent. Yeah.
I'd love to hear what we think the impact of such a change would be.
So probably gonna call some other people up, uh, to the podium as well, but I just wanna start, uh, with a couple of slides first. Um, about that one, this one right here. So in essence, anticipating what would come along, uh, for the most part. Currently, we collect, uh, three hundred twenty thousand dollars in the admin fee, the solid waste admin fee. Um, what I've included as part of this table is what an inflation increase would look like on top of that admin fee. So if you look at section E, um, not, sorry, row E, right there. Uh, you can see that, say, with the three percent inflationary increase on top of three hundred twenty thousand dollars, it would equal out to three hundred twenty-nine thousand with a five percent rate of inflation, three hundred thirty-six, seven percent, three hundred forty-two thousand, and then ten percent, five hundred fifty-two thousand dollars. What I've done is I've done a lot of math, basically, to try to figure out what should be the percentage in order to say achieve a five percent rate of inflation above the three hundred twenty thousand dollars that we currently collect while accounting for, well, while also making sure that we deal with the contract increase, which was forty-three percent, right, overall. Itself, and so our estimate from finances in five point five percent, if you wanted a five percent rate of inflation, it would be seven point eight six percent. And so, uh, that is, and I've given a range here from zero to ten, so feel free to kind of take a look at that. You wanted to, I feel like if you're looking for, you know, the admin fee plus some sort of rate of inflation settling on eight percent as of a solid waste admin fee would get you what you're kind of looking for for the most part. Five point five would actually probably reduce the amount that we take in, um, overall, which is also potentially uh, something that council may wanna do. So just wanted to put that out there. Um, council has seen this before, I won't get into too much. I think council understands what is the financial impact for resident. And for us, if you're still to try to collect ten percent more than you collected on the solid waste admin fee previously, um, instead of where we're at right now, getting to that level would help to reduce, uh, the residents, uh, money that they're paying us out of their pocket by about twelve dollars and seventy-two cents. Uh, so that was our estimate from a question that we answered earlier, uh, in our session. Um, and then with that said, with those numbers provided between you of a range of seven point four eight percent to eight point two three percent, depending on the rate inflation between zero and ten percent, somewhere in there, uh, would ideally make sense. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Janet for her financial forecast chart.
The twelve dollars is annually.
Annual, correct.
Are you still talking about the same thing?
Solid waste.
Okay, alright.
So this is the financial forecast you've been presented in the latest rendition of your budget packet. Um, you can see that the lines cross right before twenty thirty, perhaps right at twenty thirty, somewhere in there. Um, and then if we incorporate, um, I included a three point five percent solid waste fee increase. So inflationary, uh, there is of course a range of inflation, depending on which years you wanna focus on. Um, but that would bring our lines crossing to twenty twenty-nine, so about a year earlier if we were to, uh, base the solid waste fee on inflation. And the main, another strong difference that I saw is that at the end of ten years, um, under that first scenario, the scenario that you've been presented, we have a one point one million dollar fund balance at the end and within the general fund at the end of those ten years. And if you were to make the change for solid waste based on a three point five percent increase, then you would have, uh, negative sixty thousand dollars. So it's about one point two million dollars in difference over the ten years is what the city would experience.
And we'd still maintain our reserve level pretty.
Yeah, so by the end, the general fund, yeah, the general fund reserve that I'm speaking of is different than the actual reserve fund. So that is in excess of our reserves, but we can use those funds for certain one-time things, um, that council seems appropriate. So just to present the, the long-term picture, that's the approximate impact.
I know, and previous discussions, it was brought up that some of the uh, we have to, like, the road and things like that, that, um, the heavy-duty trucks and such might have, um. How would that be affected? Uh, as far as, you know, some of these predictions, if we just go with like the cost of inflation or does that take money directly away from those, those types of projects or affect the street resurfacing or?
That's a great question. Um, it is general fund money, so it affects the general fund in total. Uh, would projects remain undone and things like that? Is that what you're asking?
Maybe so.
Um, maybe that's.
Well, so we would probably still handle those projects, but we would be using other sources of funds, right, to cover that, such as your unrestricted property tax and sales tax dollars, right, overall. So we still don't intend to change the level of service, right, overall. It just means maybe down the road, we'd have to come back a little bit sooner with maybe revenue options at this point. Of course, there's a lot to be known, right, in twenty thirty-four, so a lot's gonna happen over a ten-year period, right, as well. There could be other revenue sources that come into play that will help to mitigate anything like that down the road. But right now, with the forecast shows, you, you, this point, would expect the lines to cross a little bit earlier and to have a little bit less money, uh, in twenty thirty-four, potentially from this change.
Um, I guess the question that I wanted, I, I think is along the same lines as, uh, Council member Cotton's is what's the, what are the actual fees associated with administering the waste management contract? So what are the, what's the cost to the city for having our waste picked up? What are the different, I, I know there's, there's been talk about, uh, damage to the streets, uh, there's, uh, uh, there, there are people who have to administer this in city, in city hall. Uh, so what are the actual costs of this, costs to administering that contract?
Well, before I call Jeff up, for the most part, I will tell you that it's difficult to answer that because, for example, we haven't really conducted a study to see what is the incremental impact or marginal impact of a, um, whatever the garbage truck that I want to go with, it works with any normal car and so on. But you have to understand what that difference is and then multiply that against the impact of the road, potentially, and then apply whatever costs is associated with repaving that road eventually to come up with an estimate. I'm not sure if, if their impact is forty percent, right, of the cost of resurfacing the streets, or maybe it's five percent. Um, at this point, I don't have that knowledge to be able to share with council.
Okay, but i- if you just assume this year, we collected a hundred dollars. I'm trying to keep the numbers simple because my brain's not that good at eight o'clock at night. Um, if you assume we collected a hundred dollars prior to this contract taking into effect, what you will collect the year after the contract takes into effect is a hundred and forty, about, a hundred and forty dollars. It's a forty because it's just a flat rate off the base and the base is going up by forty percent. Okay? My counter, my logic is I do not believe that labor costs and capital costs have gone up by forty percent. Something a little less than that is why I'm proposing to pull that rate down a little.
I, I, I'd like to just, I'd like to just get a better idea of what those costs are and how close it seems like we're getting on those costs with our current administration fee, whether or not it's enough and, uh, what the proposed fees would generate.
Please, I'm just suggesting it, it might be better to come back and give me what's the anticipated escalation of labor and capital cost between those two years.
I think that's also a really cool question. I like that question too.
But, well, because we can't really say, again, how much does a garbage truck hurt the road? We don't have metrics to say that they're, they, they are two, two percent of the cost of resurfacing or five percent. We don't know, and I, even if we did, it's a gas.
I'd like to hear that, yes.
Okay.
I'll share it.
Yeah. Okay. Couple of questions to answer that. Is it an admin fee or is it an impact fee, right? I mean, what was it we're trying to cover? So we approached it from a different, different way. Uh, we didn't look at cost of evolution or anything like that. We just said, how much, try, let's try to get an idea. It's shown here on the board, uh, how much it, having garbage service costs the city? You know, does it, what are all the ways that it impacts us, right? So we took some rough estimates on what the impact would be. So, right? So you say, it, it, Patrick wrote this up, so you have to kind of, kind of zero in on what he's trying to say, but the quantity calculating forty percent of street resurfacing programs, so forty percent of the cost on residual local roads. And assuming ninety-five percent of the degradation of residential roads is from trucks. And that comes, that's pretty, uh, a good estimate because when you look at how pavement wears, there's weathering, of course, but then the traffic itself, trucks do a lion's share of the damage to flexible pavels, like asphalt. And so that ninety-five percent is consistent. Uh, the degradation of residential roads, so why are, are plus ten percent degradation on all other roads? So for non-residential roads, we assume ten percent is due to large trucks. So based on that rather conservative figure, we came up with a percentage about forty percent, forty-four percent of the degradation on our residential streets and all of our roads all combined is due to the presence of garbage trucks. And that's the, that's the biggest cost. Of course, we have sidewalks, so a lot of the damage is done.
Garbage trucks are the only large trucks?
No, no, not at all, but just based on the percentage of garbage truck versus all other truck. Now, on the median, you know, the bigger roads, there's a higher percentage of other trucks. But on the residential roads, the only trucks you can see are pretty much garbage trucks. Right? So, I mean, it's, it, it, we have to guess that, we have to.
I know, that's all I'm saying, that's all I'm saying.
It's true, it's true, but we tried to use conservative, as close as we could come up with realistic numbers, right? Uh, that we could defend. Uh, we have to make a guess at it, this is our best attempt at it. We're not trying to increase the fee or anything, we're just trying to get an actual cost. We're not trying to increase the fee or anything, we're just trying to get an actual cost.
How's the justice in the council?
Okay, so first thing, I want to make sure I understand what that number at the bottom is supposed to mean, and then I've got a couple of follow-ups. So the number at the bottom is that, um, just the best guess?
That's our best guess, based on all those assumptions.
Annual cost. Annual cost, okay. And then, um, first follow-up is, uh, and then what would the ten point seven bring in annually?
The ten point seven percent would bring in four hundred, what, what is it now? And it's on the left side there.
Drew had a nice chart. Okay, cool, thanks. Okay. So then, uh, I had a couple of things that I'm mulling over, I don't need a response right now, but these are kind of the thoughts in my head is, just based on the past fees have been collected, are we actually behind? Uh, and maybe we hadn't been collecting enough from these fees to cover the costs that should have been covered. I don't know the answer to that. Um, maybe somebody does. Uh, if we were behind, then by how much? If we are behind by some significant amount, then a higher percentage could be justified in that we're kind of trying to pay for things that should have been paid for by these fees in the past and in the future, it could start taking over as well. That said, maybe not, maybe it's that we've already been paying too much and we're already ahead, um, which would justify, again, lowering it further. Um, I don't even know if these are questions that can be answered, it's just kind of what, how I'm trying to thread this weird needle of where do we land this. But here's kind of my underlying philosophy that, um, that I try to apply to these kinds of fees and taxes, et cetera. Is I think that the thing that we are charging should go to pay for the thing that we're spending it on. So what I wouldn't want to do is, um, look at the million dollars over ten years and go, ooh, think of all the things we could do with that. When that's not really what maybe this administrative fee is for. So if, if the ten point seven turns out that, uh, that is more than can be justified, then we should go lower. If, um, if the lower amount wouldn't be enough, then we should go higher. And I think that the hard part here is figuring out what is the truth. And some of it may not be possible to be known, but what I believe, the council member Holloway can correct me if I'm wrong, what I believe the spirit of, of the argument here is, is that, uh, the inflation rate in the administrative costs should not, uh, be going up by ten point seven percent over here. It should be following something like inflation.
Yeah, clar- clarification.
Yes, that's why I wanted clarification about what you're.
Okay. Right now, it is, the administrative fee is ten point seven of the base, no matter what the base. My argument is that the base is going up from this contract to the next contract by forty percent. Which means the administrative fee, because it's just a flat rate off the base, will also go up by forty percent. I do not believe that those administrative costs are going up by forty percent, or more appropriately, going up by whatever inflation we want to put on labor and capital project. Right? And I think that's, we can, all this will be your best guess, there's no exact science. Uh, my math was just to try to hit twenty percent, truth, truth telling, my math is wrong, you're probably right. But again, I do not believe those administrative costs jump by forty percent. It's something less, and we should adjust that rate to that something less. From there, it will inflate with the base. A direct relationship.
Here's my concern, and I'm, I'm the last person that says let's raise taxes, let's raise fees. However, we have to remember that when the Quaume Ridge was built, the developer had to put in the streets, if I'm mistaken, please correct me. It's been twenty-five years, there is degradation on those streets. And I was out for a walk this weekend with my wife, and I'm going past some of the streets thinking, at some point, we have to replace these streets. Where is that money going to come from? It's going to have to come out of our budget, it's going to be the capital expense at some point. And it's probably going to be sooner than any of us would like it to be. And are we going to put ourselves in a spot where we can't do the street replacements? And, and again, to the mayor's point, and that is where is the greatest degradation is? Not only on our streets, but in our alleyways. And it's those heavy trucks, those are incredibly heavy trucks. And so my concern is, I don't want to be putting us in a position where we're going to have to go out and find other ways of raising the money. It's better to have that money and keep it in reserves and do the appropriate street enhancements that we need to do to help maintain the integrity of the streets. We've got those gifted to us, those streets were basically gifted to us, but it's ours to maintain. And we're going to have to go back in the next five years and do more streets that are going to be at a point where they're starting to fail. And if they fail, then it gets into the base, and then it becomes very costly for us to go through and do that. And I, you know, as much as I appreciate the, you know, being very mindful of our taxpayers and the ratepayers, I think we also need to be mindful that we've got replacement costs, those are sunk costs, we can't avoid that. And we're going to have to come back with, with even, you know, a bigger ask. And it's going to be harder than getting a little bit now and being able to set it aside. And that, you know, it comes back to CIP and making sure that we're reserving appropriately, goes back to reserves and all that. So I'm, I'm really concerned about cutting that, yes, I understand, there's a forty percent increase. But when we look at road construction, we've seen that over the last ten years, those kind of increases, and it just seems to hit us because we're doing these contracts in either five or ten-year increments. And who would have anticipated a pandemic and what it did to the supply chain? Costs have gone up astronomically and, and cost of housing and everything. So that's where I'm, I'm just kind of apprehensive of making a knee-jerk reaction of, of cutting the, the, that, um, rate. So that's kind of where I sit.
And, uh, Chris, wasn't there a reduction in this rate over, you know, a couple of years ago during, during, uh, like two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, did we reduce this rate at all during that time?
This rate has been in effect since the beginning of contract.
Okay, so that, that hasn't changed, all right. Um, but I, I can tell you that there have been, at least downtown, streets that have been resurfaced in the last five, six years that now have just enormous gouges in them at the alleyways. And those didn't, they didn't come from my car. So I, I think there are real costs that come from cutting our garbage taken away, still in favor of it. But, um, but these are, these are, these are real costs.
Yeah, I just want a clarity in numbers, so page twenty-one of the second edition of the budget. It's one, a hundred and forty thousand annualized for twenty twenty-six. Nineteen year, four eighty. Not reading this the correct way?
Well, so you're starting with twenty twenty-four, right, at three hundred and twenty, so that's in addition to the three hundred and twenty.
Okay, so, so page twenty-one, we were looking at half that amount for twenty twenty-five for seventy thousand and twenty twenty-six, a full amount of one forty is what I understood.
So three twenty plus seventy for the half year of the contract, and then the full one forty, so three twenty plus one forty gives you to four. Yeah.
One, my, my discussion's not been knee-jerk. Okay, so.
Please address the chair.
Okay. My discussion's not knee-jerk. Okay, I was present at this original contract. I know how that ten point seven got there, okay? So I've been here through the life of it. Heaven help me. Again, and, and the discussion leads to, really, if you leave it in place, what we are changing is that portion of those things that is now levied against garbage trucks in particular. Okay, so let's drive that all the way, let's figure out what our capital costs, ninety-five percent of our capital costs on roads are for the next ten years, and increase the administrative rate to cover it. I, 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 the logic doesn't hold for me. Okay, again, my argument is I have no, I have no reason to doubt the original determination of the rate at ten point seven percent ten years ago. I do doubt that that administrative cost is going to jump by forty percent from the end of this contract to the beginning of next contract. More appropriately to to levy those costs proportionally against garbage in alignment with cost escalations for labor and capital. Therefore, their contribution percentage-wise doesn't change. Right now, you're more than doubling what their percentage contribution is to capital and labor costs within the city of Sequoia. Okay, that, that doesn't hold with our current, we're in an inflationary period, but doesn't hold with the amount of inflation we're experiencing right now. So again, um, I threw a number, Drew picked other numbers.
So the residents, I think they impacted like twelve dollars. Ron and myself sat in on the Washington meeting this morning, talked about state route eighteen. And phase, we're in phase one right now, and phase two would be deep creek to Tiger Mountain. They're stating, which budgeted there, six hundred and forty million. Not going to be able to go from deep creek to Tiger. To Tiger with the six hundred and forty million that is budgeted. They think it's going to take another billion for just that, for those couple additional miles from deep creek to the border. Anyway, so it may not be in one inflation, but we are seeing that in road reconstruction. And just like, we maintain our roads. Twelve dollars additional year, this is probably okay, if we maintain our roads.
You know, the counterbalance, maybe ten point whatever, isn't sufficient enough. Maybe it should be even higher than that, and we could go through a rate study and, you know, on, on what should be an appropriate level for street replacement, surface replacement. So, you know, I guess it's, we, we can make a decision that may seem popular by changing the rate. But are we really not addressing the need? And the need is to make sure that we appropriately replace streets when we can and as we can.
Point, just a point of order. To be fair, I think that nobody has proposed changing the rate to be popular. Um, so I think we need to be careful about, uh, about how we stay our.
So the public works department did attempt to do that study, and it's up there in the screen. And, and once you get through all the factors, the amounts they came up with, let me break. Um, there's some vexed sidewalks, staff, street sweeping, et cetera, it's all laid out. And we can argue about factors and adjust accordingly, and parks and public works certainly would be a good place to go through that exercise of work. But that's what that document attempts to do. Um, and I, I take them on their word when they say they weren't solving for X. They actually went through the exercise of costs before they looked at what the, of the amount collected was.
Yeah, Chair wants me to keep addressing Chair. Chair needs to control some of the language. Knee-jerk and doing things for popularity. It is not appropriate for the discussion.
Any other comments regarding this? Everyone have a chance to speak.
Drew, can you put your slide up? So, yeah, the motion on the table was to reduce it to five point five. My question to you guys, though, is based on the table that Drew has and the massive math he has done. Is there a more appropriate number? Or, you know, you can always vote, you could do a little dinosaur to change the number. Or we just stick with the big dinosaur and you can vote yes to. But I didn't want to discount Drew's math, he's better at it than I am. For maybe an appropriate number.
There any other, any other discussion? Right now, the motion on the table is change it from ten point seven percent, I'm going to be to five point five percent.
Look to amend the motion to, uh, seven point eight six, I think that's the percent.
That's the little, yes, correct.
The motion's been amended, seven point eight six percent is our second. By Johnson, said by Robert Johnson. So is there any discussion regarding?
Captain Johnson.
Yeah, so I know that, uh, the, um, garbage collection rates are going up quite substantially. We had a great discussion about that in the past. I think that this is just one way to, uh, throw a bone back that direction and lower the costs a little bit to our residents. I'm not entirely convinced that we need the entire ten point seven percent, uh, to maintain current levels of service uh, for the thing that the administrative fee is supposed to go toward. Uh, it maybe, I mean, the, maybe, maybe we should have insisted there'd be a plus or minus, like in proper science classes on, uh, some of those estimates. Um, but bottom line is, uh, I, I want that million dollars, that extra million dollars over ten years for, um, roads and stuff. I'm just not convinced that that extra million would be going to the exact cause that it needs to go to. And I think that when I weigh things out, I feel like this is where I land. Um, I appreciate the arguments that I've heard of both sides. Uh, I would be more comfortable if that number was eight point oh one. Uh, well, I don't think, I, I think there's like, there's all kinds of prehistoric paleontology that we have to do to figure out how that's done, but I would be more comfortable with that. Because I think that the numbers presented by, um, by Jeff are, are, I'm sorry, Mr. Hammond, are, uh, are realistic, um, but I also, uh, appreciate the arguments that, uh, Gelson Holloway's men. So if we get, if we can adjust it to eight point one, in whatever mechanism that has to be. Why do you never make motions? There's already a motion, and I don't want to, I, I, I don't want to second that emotion, I'm not, it's not my.
Alternatively, do you want to consider doing a major term change to this? I don't know exactly the conversations that went into choosing the ten point change. I'm initially like, do we want to basically take? Admin fee initially, like do we want to basically take the tax rate for the admin fee, drop it for two years? Of residents as they're dealing with an increased waste management costs and then go back to what is considered a more normal or standard amount? I don't know if that makes your job much more difficult, but that potentially be an option as well. That way we have it looking horrible also.
So, hey, two things. One, uh, we can change this rate every September with enough advanced notice. So. We can, we can do that as we see fit. That requires to do anything different tonight. Um, two, uh, if the original motioner will accept, the second would accept changing the percentage to eight point oh zero one.
Sounds good to me.
I just modified the little dinosaur.
I like how you did that.
Eight, or eight point zero, what else is it? Is that your motion?
Not my motion.
We modified the original.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's.
Modified the baby dinosaur.
Okay. Is it a second?
I was second. I can go with the modification.
So, so this would change, you have to change by, bring into waste management by, um. Yeah, November first. To have it going to effect at the beginning of new contract issue. And then if you want to change it again next year, the contract stays the day, or every September first. Tell them they would change it then for that January next year. So. We have motion on floor for to many administration fee. To from ten point seven to eight point zero one.
For the border. I think that technically we're still one baby dinosaur deep.
See, this is why I don't.
Yes, uh, so going down to the, uh, eight point oh one percent, I believe that right now where we're at is, uh, that that is an amendment to the idea of lowering the percentage. From, uh, ten point seven percent of all.
Right. The original motion was to go to five point five. This is a change to five point five to eight point, eight point oh one, but then we got to go back and vote on the original motion to reduce the rate.
Yeah, ten point six is gone, but you're saying from five point five to eight point. No, I don't think it was. For the seven.
No, the five, the five point five. The five point five.
Right, and just going, you know, just here, you change the five, if you agree to it and change. From five point five to eight point zero one. And then we'd have to vote on the, doing the change of the rate overall. Yeah. So.
So red, eight point zero one percent. All in favor of CI?
Aye.
Any opposed, Dan?
Aye.
Okay, so six, four and one against that one. And then you have the.
Ray, Mayor, A's again. Um, I just wanted to, uh. What happened to the seven point eight six percent was a modification to the motion by the person who made the second and agreed to by the person who made that motion. And make instead of the number be seven point eight six percent, be eight point oh one percent.
Thank God I understand that now.
Right, the end of the page is a record, it's a little bit clearer.
Yes, so, okay, that's why.
So, please, the ministry fee. From twenty point seven. We already know what you're doing with it. Okay. All in favor of CI?
Aye.
Any opposed, Dan?
Aye.
Okay, so six, four.
Point of order.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, any other comments? We're, we have until nine o'clock or are we getting to?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite get, it's to take effect with the contract.
With the contract.
In here, right?
To notify them before they go.
Yeah.
Was there any other questions? The Congressmen put out this report this evening, remember that, or. Special workshops on Thursday and public hearing here. So, any other? Comments?
Great job.
Said very well throughout the presentation. So, I do have one. Question, um. In the letter, I think they sent it out to all of you and. Repetitive. Into you, Dan. Anyone that emailed him during, you want to sign this? Or the. Visually or.
I've done to consider, so I would ask you to discuss that on Thursday.
Is that? Should I bring it ready to sign? Or did anyone have changes to it?
Come on, I haven't had a chance to review it.
Again, we'll take it into consideration on Thursday.
Thanks, well, we'll bring it back, we'll keep it reading the next couple of days and if there's any changes you would like to see, please let me know. So. Pretty much. Right. Any other comments? Anything in turn?
No moves?
Exactly.